Borough Council, ask everyone to turn your cell phones to vibration please or turn them off and we'll start the meeting with a moment of silence. Please rise to the platform, please.
Let the ladies and gentlemen fly in the United States of America and deliver a honor for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Chief Rule.
Councilwoman Coby.
Present.
Councilman Varys.
Here.
Councilwoman Dampco.
Here.
Councilwoman Katina.
Here.
Councilman Sarsfield.
Here.
President of the Loss.
Here.
Merrick Cavistic.
Here.
All present.
We have a presentation or we start with the police officer?
If you raise your right hand, please. Shall I speak into the microphone? Aye Timothy E. Clark do solemnly swear to support.
Aye Timothy E. Clark do solemnly swear to support.
Obey and defend.
Obey and defend.
The Constitution of the United States of America.
The Constitution of the United States of America.
The Constitution and the laws of this Commonwealth.
The Constitution and laws of this Commonwealth.
And that I will discharge the duties of police officer.
And I will discharge the duties of police officer.
With fidelity.
With fidelity.
And I do further swear.
And I do further swear.
That I am not knowingly a member with specific intent.
That I'm not knowingly a member with a specific intent.
To further the aims of any organization.
To further the aims of any organization.
That advocates the overthrow of the government of the United States.
That advocates the overthrow of the government of the United States.
Or of this Commonwealth.
Or of this Commonwealth.
By force or violence or other unconstitutional means.
By force or violence or other unconstitutional means.
Or seeking by force or violence.
Or seeking by force or violence.
To deny other persons their rights.
To deny other persons their rights.
Under the Constitution of the United States or of this Commonwealth.
Under the Constitution of the United States or of this Commonwealth.
And I do further swear.
And I do further swear.
That I will not knowingly become a member.
That I will not knowingly become a member.
With a specific intent.
With a specific intent.
To further the aims.
To further the aims.
Of such organization.
Of such organization.
During the period that I am an employee of the Carnegie Police Department.
During the period that I am an employee of the Carnegie Police Department.
Congratulations, you're now officially.
Officer Clark, congratulations, good luck and a great God keep you safe out there.
You're welcome.
At this time, we have a proclamation to be delivered by our liar.
April fifteenth to the twentieth is National Boys and Girls Club Week. You know Carnegie is extremely fortunate to have our own Boys and Girls Club right in our community. Carnegie Boys and Girls Club provides quality after-school educational and recreational programs for the youth of not only Carnegie but the surrounding areas. Here is just a sample of some of the programs that they provide. They have after-school care for a number of kids. They provide homework help, math tutoring, teen employment, basketball, hockey, golf, flag football, computer classes, summer camps, acting classes, and so on. That's just a few of the many, many programs that they offer at the Carnegie Boys and Girls Club. Currently Carnegie has about 120 children in the after-school program. Many of them, most of them are probably from our community. They also have 490 boys and girls that participate in the recreational programs. It's almost 500 children that they service. They have about 100 kids that participate in their summer day camps. By the way, they are taking registration for their summer day camps. They're about $70 a week and you're not going to have a better bargain. Here today to receive the proclamation, if they would please stand, is the President of the Board, Jerry Roach. Is the fundraiser coordinator, is that how, is that your? Carrie Anne Moran. The Executive Director, Danielle Bauer. Is that Lou today? And since it is going to be, since April fifteenth to the twentieth, this National Boys and Girls Club Week, we want to have a proclamation here for our own Boys and Girls Club to honor them for that week. So the Borough of Carnegie, Proclamation 2012-02 to designate April fifteenth through the twentieth, 2012, as National Boys and Girls Club Week. Whereas the Boys and Girls Club of America had its beginnings in Hartford, Connecticut in 1860 and now consists of nearly 4,000 clubs serving 4.1 million young people through the membership and community outreach. And whereas the Boys and Girls Club of Western Pennsylvania was established in 1931. And whereas the Boys and Girls Club of Western Pennsylvania is a nonprofit organization dedicated to enhancing the quality of life for our youth. And whereas the primary mission of the Boys and Girls Club of Western Pennsylvania is to promote health, social, educational, vocational, and character development for boys and girls ages six to eighteen by self-esteem, values, and skills. And whereas the Carnegie Boys and Girls Club has served the youth of Carnegie and surrounding communities by providing a safe place to spend time during non-score hours and the summer. And whereas the Carnegie Boys and Girls Club has dedicated staff committed to improving each child's life by offering programs such as homework tutoring, computer training, sports education, and life skills mentoring. And whereas the Carnegie Boys and Girls Club has been instrumental in helping to develop many at-risk youth in Carnegie into possible, into responsible adults who have gone on to be productive members of our society. Now therefore, the Mayor and Borough Council take great pride in recognizing and honoring the Carnegie Boys and Girls Club during National Boys and Girls Club Week. Thank you very much.
At this time, we'll take public comment regarding motions that are listed in the Agenda. If you have a copy of the Agenda, there are a number of motions we're attending to tonight and if you would like to make comments regarding any of those motions, this would be the time to do that. Just step up to the microphone, please, and state your name and address. At this time then, seeing that there are no comments, we'll go into the listed motions. Administration Finance, Councilwoman Tina, please.
Motion to approve the minutes from the council meeting on March 12th, 2012.
Second. Comments, discussion? Roll call, Chief.
Councilwoman Coby.
Yes.
Councilman Varys.
Yes.
Councilwoman Dampco.
Yes.
Councilwoman Katina.
Yes.
Councilman Sarsfield.
Yes.
President of the Loss.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you.
Motion to approve the April bill list and addendum with the exception of the library monthly payment.
Second.
Comments?
Mr. President, the only comment that I have is that this council doesn't mean this to be punitive, but we do have ongoing concerns with personnel and fiscal policies of the Andrew Carnegie Free Library musical and I think this action underscores those concerns.
And that payment would be?
It's going to, it's going to be a stat, or it's going to be a, as S for the, an SRO account for the library.
Other comments?
I just agree that it, I think it's an appropriate action at this time until we establish some more obliged communication of exactly what's, you know, what's going on. The money will be there. We have a line item budget for it, so the money is there. I think, you know, hopefully these problems can be worked through and the monies can be turned over.
Other comments? A roll call, Chief.
Councilman Varys.
Yes.
Councilwoman Dampco.
Yes.
Councilwoman Katina.
Yes.
Councilman Sarsfield.
Yes.
Councilwoman Coby.
Yes.
President of the Loss.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Motion to ratify the manager's agreement between the Borough of Carnegie and Jeffrey C. Hartman for a one-year term beginning April 12th, 2012.
Second.
Comments? No one's going to make any comments, Chief. I don't know if that means they want you back or they want you to go away.
Means he needs his head examined. It's under, just for clarification, it's under the same terms and agreement as the last contract. The amount stays the same and the terms are the same.
Any other comments? Roll call.
Councilwoman Dampco.
Yes.
Councilwoman Katina.
Yes.
Councilman Sarsfield.
Yes.
Councilwoman Coby.
Yes.
Councilman Varys.
Yes.
President of the Loss.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Motion to authorize the Borough Manager to begin the advertising process to fill the vacant position of Administrative Secretary.
Second.
Comments?
For those of you that don't know, Darlene, who is the Chief's Administrative Secretary, announced her retirement, I believe, in August of this year, Chief. And we're posting for a position to fill the, actually there, I believe, one of the current administrative, administration personnel is interested in moving to that position, which is currently acceptable practice, so we're posting a position for administrative, for a general administrative secretary of administration.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Yes, Mr. President, this would also like to take this time to thank very much Darlene for all that she has done. I know the Chief, she has been the right-hand person to Chief during his, you know, during his administration. She has done a fantastic job. We really appreciate all that she has done for the department.
Steve, we're getting a little feedback in this microphone, so could you turn that down a little? Any other comments on this motion? If none, Chief, roll call.
Councilwoman Dampco.
Yes.
Councilwoman Katina.
Yes.
Councilman Sarsfield.
Yes.
Councilwoman Coby.
Yes.
Councilman Varys.
Yes.
President of the Loss.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Councilwoman Coby, motions for code enforcement.
Thank you, Mr. President. Motion to approve a curb cut for 8 Watson Street.
Comments, discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close. Motion carries. Public Works, motions, Councilman Dampco.
Motion to permit the Carnegie Sunday Softball Association permission to utilize 7th Avenue Field every Sunday from 8:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m. beginning March 10th, 2012 and ending August 26th, 2012.
Second.
Comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close. Motion carries.
Motion to disqualify the 2012 sewer maintenance contract bid of Osiris Enterprises for failure to comply with bid specifications. Specifically, Osiris failed to sign and notarize the section entitled Article 10-Bid Submittal.
Second.
Comments?
Just to briefly say what was going on here, it was the Borough took bids for the 2012 sewer maintenance contract. The low bid received was from Osiris Enterprises. In reviewing the bid packages, it was noticed that they failed to sign the form, which basically included all the details of the bid package. The next lowest bidder properly filled out their bid package and that is why, obviously the RFP was required to be signed and notarized. And that is why the Osiris bid has been disqualified and/or has been disqualified and a bid will be taken or a motion will be presented to award the contract to the next lowest bidder.
Other comments? Roll call, Chief.
Councilwoman Coby.
Yes.
Councilman Varys.
Yes.
Councilwoman Dampco.
Yes.
Councilwoman Katina.
Yes.
Councilman Sarsfield.
Yes.
President of the Loss.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Motion to award contract A of the 2012 sewer repair project a sole-like construction in the amount of $349,980.
Second. Comments? Chief, roll call.
Councilman Sarsfield.
Yes.
Councilwoman Katina.
Yes.
Councilwoman Dampco.
Yes.
Councilman Varys.
Yes.
Councilwoman Coby.
Yes.
President of the Loss.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Motion to depart award contract B of the 2012 sewer repair project bid pending further review by the Borough Engineer of Work, experienced, and referenced submittals from the apparent low bidder.
Second. Comments? What was the, roll call.
Councilwoman Coby.
Yes.
Councilman Varys.
Yes.
Councilwoman Dampco.
Yes.
Councilwoman Katina.
Yes.
Councilman Sarsfield.
Yes.
President of the Loss.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Motion to award contract C of the 2012 sewer repair project bid to sole-like construction in the amount of $140,000.
Second. Comments? Roll call, Chief.
Councilman Varys.
Yes.
Councilwoman Dampco.
Yes.
Councilwoman Katina.
Yes.
Councilman Sarsfield.
Yes.
Councilwoman Coby.
Yes.
President of the Loss.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Public safety motions, Councilman Sarsfield, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have two motions this evening. Motion A is motion to adopt Borough Ordinance Number 2373, an ordinance of the Borough of Carnegie prohibiting parking on the south curb of Senecille Drive between Margarete Street and Dulittle Street and on the south curb of Senecille Drive between Dulittle Street and a .35 feet east of the intersection of Senecille Drive and Dulittle Street.
Second. Comments?
This primarily comes, Mr. President, through request of the residents up on Senecille that, you know, it was dangerous where some of the vehicles were parking and it was definitely a public safety issue and this was an ordinance that needed to pass.
Other comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close. Motion carries.
Motion B is motion to advertise Borough Ordinance Number 2374, an ordinance of the Borough of Carnegie, amending Chapter 15 of the Borough Code of Ordinances relating to parking of commercial vehicles in the Borough and permanently extending Borough Ordinance 2361 as amended.
Second.
Comments? Can you explain the amendment?
The amendment adds trailers to the ordinance. We had put a sunset provision to this ordinance to put it out there as a test. I think we didn't get much feedback as far as residents complaining to the ordinance. In the same sense, we didn't document many violations. I think there was a total of three and they were complaint-driven. And now the sunset has reached and now it's becoming a permanent ordinance.
Thank you. Any other comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Present?
I voted present.
Mike, you've got to stop drinking before these meetings, you know what I'm saying?
No, I didn't, I didn't want to vote for it, so I voted present.
Community development motions, Councilman Varys.
First motion to appoint Mike Sarsfield as liaison to the Shade Tree Commission with the term expiring on December 31st, 2012.
Comments? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close. Motion carries.
Motion B to appoint Marlene Pendleton to the Shade Tree Commission with the term expiring June 30th, 2014.
Second.
Comments?
Yes. Marlene has been on, we're, as well as myself, my term had expired because it's an annual appointment, so each one of these positions will now be, you know, in effect and we're moving along well with the Shade Tree Commission, but this was just some paperwork that needed to be, you know, properly documented and taken care of.
Any other comments?
I think the Shade Tree Commission has done an excellent job. They've done a lot of things, they're working on a lot of things, including some trees and the plant, the planners and all that, so I think the group of people working with the Shade Tree Commission have really bonded well together and they're going to, you're going to see some results from this commission, so.
For those that don't know, the Shade Tree Commission is responsible for all trees that line the streets or even the street, trees on private property that are next to the street. Part of that is because of the possibility that certain tree types can damage sewer lines and roads and sidewalks and so the Tree Commission has responsibility for all trees along our streets, including the business district and also on those alongside of streets that may be on private properties.
And just to give a brief update, this fall, we should be receiving 25 free trees, which would assist with the Third Street Project and some trees to go down on a latter part of Main Street. And the following year, with proper maintenance and care of the 25 free trees, we could have 50 free trees available the following year. So, you know, and then each year, free trees would increase, you know, with proper care and maintenance of it and trees are a great asset. I mean, they, they help, you know, with the bloomers in the air, just beautification of the whole town and, you know, I'm very excited to be a part of this endeavor.
Any further comments on B?
I think Mike's new title could be Farmer Mike.
All those in favor on Motion B, say aye.
Aye.
Close. Motion carries.
Motion C to appoint Bob Potagrill to the Shade Tree Commission with the term expiring on June 30th, 2014.
Second.
Comments? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close. Motion carries.
Motion D to advertise to fill a vacant position on the Shade Tree Commission.
Any comments on this? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close.
I, I'm sorry, I have one comment. When you say advertise, is it, it's not an official advertisement in the newspaper as far as us paying for an advertisement, right?
Correct.
Right, I just wanted to make sure we clarified. It's just going to be hopefully with the, the help of the Signal Item and the Post Gazette and the others, that they'll just put it out in the paper.
Not in ad, per se, but.
Not in ad, but a, an order.
Any further comments on D? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close. Motion carries.
Motion E to direct the Borough Solicitor to take the necessary action to disband the parking authority.
Second.
Comments?
Yeah, I'll make a comment, Mr. President. Back when Mr. Katina was President, in speaking to our engineering firm, we brought back the parking authority, if we believed that there would be, it'd be easier for us to obtain some grants and funding to take care of our parking lots and maintain them. Once we started this endeavor, we put people in place for the parking authority. We come to find it would have probably been a greater expense to the Borough and then sitting down with the members of the parking authority, it was part of the recommendation that we actually disbanded. So council's not taking the action without the support of the parking authority themselves and their recommendation to disband it.
Is there, does this authority have a bank account?
Yes.
And then disposition of those funds would be?
It would be.
It would remain in the parking account. Right now it's still in the parking account under the Borough auspices.
Right. But no money has, since, since it's been established, that same amount of money has been in there that was prior to the start of it, so no money's been spent or anything, so. My money could continue to be at Borough's disposal.
It would be at our disposal for parking lot payments.
Correct.
Any other comments regarding the parking authority? Roll call, Chief.
Councilwoman Coby.
Yes.
Councilman Varys.
Yes.
Councilwoman Dampco.
Yes.
Councilwoman Katina.
Yes.
Councilman Sarsfield.
Yes.
President of the Loss.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Motion F, motion to ratify the decision of the Planning Commission accepting the lot consolidation and conditional use proposed by Wright-Chippewa Holdings LLC. The lot consolidations will consist of six parcels of land, which include lot and block numbers 66-E-44, 66-E-46, 66-E-48, 66-E-50, 66-E-20, and 66-E-24. The recommendations for the conditional use will be contingent upon the plans meeting the necessary zoning requirements, including landscaping, lighting, paving, and stormwater management.
Second.
Comments? Mr. Solicitor, do you want to explain what the purpose of this is?
Well, certainly, certainly, Mr. President. Wright-Chippewa Holdings has filed an application. Basically, what they want to do is they want to expand their sales area. And it's six parcels of land that surround what is currently Brown Alley. I think if there are no objections by Wednesday, the Borough vacation of Browns at Brown Alley will be effective and we can record it. Following that, they own all six of these parcels, so to make it contingent and one parcel of land that would be the sales area, they would need to consolidate this and, they've already declared conditional use, I believe, so the only thing that would need to be necessary would be consolidation of these six blocks, which are all of Wright-Chippewa Holdings, into one parcel of land and they would be free to pave the lot and expand their sales area. into one parcel of land, and they would be free to, um, pave the lots and expand their sales area.
Thank you. Comments? Anyone else? Roll call, both of you.
Councilman Sarsfield?
Yes.
Councilman Tettin?
Yes.
Councilman Deppco?
Yes.
Councilman Veris?
Yes.
Councilman Kobe?
Yes.
President of the office?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Committee reports, uh, Councilman Tettin of Administration Finance?
Uh, Mr. President, I didn't get a chance to review our financials. They just came out Friday and with the, with the holiday weekend. Uh, I guess I didn't get to do that, so I'll have a report next month.
Thank you. Councilwoman Kobe, anything for code enforcement?
I don't believe I have anything. Do you have anything, Kelly? We're good this month. Thank you, Mr. President.
Okay. Public Works, Councilman Deppco?
Yes, um, I just wanted to let everybody know what the, uh, Public Works has just recently finished. They put away the winter equipment, hopefully we won't need it again with the snow tonight, I think. Um, they finished the winter cool patching. They have the footer for the salt shed in, um, the first phase of the, uh, Carnegie Park. They have the electric updated in the stone shelter. Uh, the stone shelter is clean and power blasted, and the old playground equipment's removed. And the ongoing projects they have right now are the, uh, salt shed blocks that are put in place right now. They got permission for the paver, of course. They'll be getting that, um, Chief, what, do you know what they'll be getting?
We're approving the pavement tonight. Uh, the July 1st cut this week. I'm assuming the transfer would happen sometime later this week?
Um, let's see. And cleanup, grass cleaning, all that kind of thing they're doing. And just a quick of the upcoming projects that they're working on are, of course, the 5K race for the fire, uh, department. Uh, they have to get the barricades ready, prepare the roofs, uh, set up the signs, uh, start, uh, starting and finish line. Getting ready for the May 12th cleanup day, which I guess you'll go for more. Can you report? No. Uh, tomorrow, avenue steps and, uh, the alleys paved. Once we get the paver, they'll be able to start paving some alleys for us, so that'll be great. That's it.
Thank you. The elaboration on the paver, uh, we are applying a paver, uh, to use for some paving projects from Scott Township. That's later on the agenda. Uh, excuse me, it's already been approved, uh, with the building. Councilman Sarsfield, please, public safety?
Thank you, Mr. President. Under public safety, as everybody witnessed tonight, um, we swore in, uh, Officer Clark is our new officer, here in the borough of Carnegie, and I'm quite confident that he'll be a great addition to the department and provide support to the rest of his fellow officers. Um, Mr. Clark is very enthusiastic and has already set high standards for himself. Very much the same high standards that Chief Harvard expects from each and every one of his officers. So, uh, I see, um, I believe that Mr. Clark is fine at home here and will, you know, be here for quite some time. And I'm very excited about that. Um, the house at 307 Center Avenue, um, has been declared a safety hazard by Borough Council, and it will be, uh, promptly removed, um, hopefully sometime next week. Also, in speaking to Sergeant Kennedy, he's had a recent conversation with the sergeant of the Pennsylvania State Police, and he will be given authorization, um, to begin, uh, conducting, uh, tractor-trailer inspections, um, along our main streets, which again, I think will help alleviate, you know, with some of the tractor-trailer traffic that we receive. Um, perhaps they may find another, a problem to take out in the borough of Carnegie. Um, and just to touch on the Shade Tree Commission again, um, the Shade Tree Commission will be holding, uh, Planning the Flowers, which will run in conjunction with, uh, cleanup day, and that will be on May the 12th, um, this year. And, uh, I, I believe that, you know, putting the two, cleanup and the, uh, planning day together should work out fine. Um, we're, we're looking at not add, but we're, we actually have a meeting for tomorrow, and we will, um, give that time to Steve, and then we'll get that published on our website, and, uh, I'll give Mr. Whitmer a call. I'm sure he'll be more than friendly enough to put that in the paper for us. And, uh, that's all I have, Mr. President. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sarsfield. Community Development, uh, Councilman Veris?
I have, uh, two things tonight, actually. The school district is still, uh, conducting a search for a new superintendent, and, uh, they are doing a survey right now to look at all three buildings, the two elementary and senior high, as to what type of improvements they need to make in the near future. Um, for those who haven't heard, we do have the medicine shop moving to the old post office, and they're also going to have a cafe, uh, I guess it's called a cafe in there. And we had a presentation on the, uh, new Dunkin' Donuts going in at the service department for the, uh, Chevrolet dealership down there. Uh, hopefully, that'll get off the ground within the next three to four months, and hopefully be done before the end of the year. Uh, they're proposing a little strip mall there with seven, uh, different, uh, businesses in there, and the Dunkin' Donuts will be approximately 18,000, or 1,800 square feet. That's all I have tonight.
Thank you. Uh, for my comments tonight, I just want to say that, um, you've heard that there's a lot of things happening in town, and even the things that Councilman Veris just mentioned about Dunkin' Donuts and the medicine shop moving. There's a lot of business activity in town right now. We had a, uh, we had an open house last week for developers who would be interested in Carnegie. They met at Papa Jay's to discuss, uh, uh, likely sites for development in Carnegie, and it was very well received. I think especially considering that the developer who's, uh, responsible for the Dunkin' Donuts, um, uh, project, uh, basically declared that Carnegie was a gold mine in his, in his eyes. Lot of traffic through here, a very low cost of taxation for businesses, and, uh, he thinks it's a great opportunity. So, uh, we're hoping that other developers will see that as well, not only for business activity, but also for residential activity. We have, uh, a number of areas which are within close walking distance to the busway here, which is right outside the windows. And, uh, we've been trying to attract some developers to get us some residential housing, uh, projects going, uh, where people could walk to the bus to go into the city. So, we're very, uh, we're very excited about those things. We do have, uh, some ongoing, uh, issues, uh, with the library and the fire department. Nobody should think that the, the council members up here, uh, are sitting around looking to pick a fight with anybody. That's not our, our goals. However, we do have to represent the taxpayers and do what's in your best interest. So, we, uh, we're diligent, and we believe that, uh, these conflicts can be resolved, and we expect them to be resolved. So, we're, uh, we're positive about the future of Carnegie, not just for, uh, businesses and residents, but also for our community organizations. We do have upcoming, um, Civil War Weekend at the end of the month. And this is on, uh, what is the day of the weekend? Saturday, the 28th? Saturday, the 28th is Civil War Weekend in Carnegie. We're very much looking forward to that. And of course, that is in conjunction with our library and, uh, the ESPY Hall, the ESPY Post that is, uh, part of that facility. At this point, I would like to, uh, ask if there is a representative, I'm looking, Mr. Scott, you want to speak for the fire department this evening?
Sure. Uh, for much, uh, month of March, yeah, calls for fire assistance for 22 for the fire department, 224 EMS. And Bay 5 is our annual cash badge fundraiser. It'll be out at the Patrol Fire Club. And doors open at 6:00 and ends at 11:00.
Mr. President, I'd like to ask you a question. I don't mean to put you on the spot, but I had a, um, I, I meet with Mayor Harper every once in a while, and, and maybe you could confirm this, but she received a, uh, a lower rate on her homeowner's insurance. And when she called her homeowner's insurance, she said that that rate, that the homeowner's insurance representative told her that the rate was due to a better rating for our fire department, uh, so, which in turn reduced her homeowner's insurance. Have you heard anything about that, or is that...
I haven't heard, but I know if the fire department is staffed and has proper equipment for the, the man loading and the, you know, the people in the towns, um, your, your homeowners will come down. The higher rate we get, rate we get, the lower the homeowners should be.
Okay. So, when people are, um, when they're renewing their homeowners, they should probably inquire about that, maybe?
If something will end up with...
Okay, because she, like I said, the feedback she got from her, her representative was, was good, and that's the, and that's, they told her directly that that's the reason why her, uh, homeowner went down this time. All right, well, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Scott.
Mayor?
Thank you, Mr. President. We had a, um, criminal arrest last month of 25, traffic citations 47, parking tickets 159, complaints and self-initiated activity were 1,052. Recently, and I know many people have already heard this, but recently our department was alerted to media about a scam perpetrated on one of our, on one of our elderly residents. In this scam, the resident received a phone call alerting her that her grandson was in jail and needed to make a $2,800 payment in order for him to have bail. Uh, the caller even offered to send a cab to the resident to take her back, to, to take her to the bank to wire the money. Luckily, a family member called the police, and they were able to determine that this was definitely a scam. And when the police actually called the phone number that the resident was given, it was a Quebec, Canada number. And I bring that up because that is not the only scam that we have had in the borough recently. There have been a number of them. Uh, this one made the news because of how egregious the, uh, the scammer was by sending a taxi cab and telling the, uh, the, the resident not to tell the bank why they were getting the money out or why they were wiring the money. So, those are two huge red flags, so, uh, our police department did a great job by alerting the media on that. We've also had an issue where a roofer was going door to door and told an individual who lives up in Roslyn Heights that they, they're, they needed some work on their roof, and the individual let the roofer in the house. In these cases, a lot of times, the roof, these type of individuals will work with another person, and they will, and while the, the one person is distracting the resident, the other person will go through the house. Well, we had this incident. Fortunately, there was nothing taken from this person, but what we do know is that that our police department believes in fully this 100% that this was a scam. Uh, we've also had scams sent by mail and telling residents that they've won money or telling residents that they've won airline tickets. I've even received one of these myself. Uh, there's been a recent email scam that a resident received. This recent email scam told the resident that the relative was in trouble with another country, and they needed to send that relative money. Uh, unfortunately, the person did not believe it, called the police department right away, and it was stopped immediately. The, the thing that I want to alert everybody about is that if your gut tells you that something's not right, if someone is asking you for money, check with your family members. If they're telling you that there's a family member that's in trouble, check with our police department. Call 911. There's, 911 is for every incident. Call 911, ask our police to investigate it for you. They will do it with no, no problem. I do want to say that there was a scam that I received one time, so it's, these, these scammers are very, um, they're very smart, and they, these scams can become very intricate. What they, what they did is they took over a friend's email account. So, the actual email came from my friend's email account to me, saying that they were in England and they were stuck. They lost their passport, they lost their money, and they needed money wired to them immediately. Fortunately, I knew my friend wasn't in England, but they sent that scam out to every person on that, on their email list. So, someone who maybe is not as close to this person may have thought that this is true and wanted to send them money. So, even if you get an email from somebody that's reputable, if they're asking you for money, check it out. Once again, call 911. Our officer would be more than happy to help you out. I want to, with these scams, a lot of times, a lot of it will be door to door. And I want to alert everybody that we do have an ordinance here for solicitors. Uh, if you see, first of all, if you see a stranger in your neighborhood, or if you see someone going door to door, call 911 and keep saying that, and we will check it out. Uh, the ordinance is, is pretty clear that they have to have a permit, and there's a background check. Uh, Chief, would you like to explain a little bit about our ordinance on, sort of, like...
Spring and summer tis the season for, uh, hub improvement scams. It seems like, uh, with the good weather will have an increase in these type of, uh, scams and attempted scams. Like the mayor said, in Carnegie, people going door to door soliciting are required to have a permit. The process is, they will come into a borough building, they will get an application from Steve over administration. When they return that application, it's required, they provide a criminal background check on themselves. Those forms are forwarded over to me, and I review those forms. In a recent case, we had about 30 Steve from a, uh, a local vendor who wanted to solicit our town. In scrutinizing those applications, uh, there was partially five that didn't meet my criteria, that I refused to give a permit because of criminal history information. Uh, so, when somebody comes to your home, you can ask them for a copy of the permit. And if they don't have a copy of that permit, uh, call, obviously don't let them in, but call the police department.
Thank you, Chief. One other, one other note is, if you see a person wearing a badge, that doesn't necessarily mean he was okayed by Carnegie Borough. Some people will wear a badge by their employer. Some people will just make their own badge on the computer and put it around their neck. So, a badge does not necessarily mean safety. Uh, in, if our solicitor is here, if, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Solicitor, uh, under the federal law, we do have to allow solicitors to solicit their neighborhoods at 9:00 P.M.
Not until 9:00 P.M.? But I don't know if that's a federal law. That's the borough law. But I mean, there is free speech implications, I guess. I, I don't know if this, I don't know if the specifics. And I, and you have to have reasonable times. Like you said, the manner of restrictions, which I believe 9:00 P.M. cutoff would be reasonable. I, well, that is the case, long as...
Thank you. I didn't mean to put you on the spot. Thank you very much. I, I know that, um, the 9:00 P.M. is, is, is our law right now, and it's, it was due to the fact that we had to have it at 9:00 P.M. And, uh, as anybody knows, and I've stated many times, that I believe 9:00 P.M. is too late for people to be soliciting in our, in our borough, especially in the wintertime, but unfortunately, right now, we cannot change it. I know Scott Township is looking into that, and I think they're, uh, coming across the same stumbling blocks, but I'll follow that very closely. Okay, now that we're done with scams, let's talk about Dare Graduation. Dare Graduation. Tomorrow night is Dare Graduation at the elementary school. Once again, another successful Dare year for Sergeant Lint. And, uh, he has, from what I understand, he's, he has three winners for the Dare Essay, and hopefully we will have them here next month. But, uh, they will be awarded their, uh, prizes tomorrow. Sergeant Lint also gave a presentation to the fourth, fifth, and sixth graders at Carnegie Elementary School about internet safety. And, uh, we plan on doing one for the parents coming up. And, uh, I'd like to give an update on the creek. I spoke with the Army Corps of Engineers again today. The contract has been awarded to Meadville Land Services. The, uh, date that it was signed was April 3rd, so from April 3rd, they have 180 days to, um, work in that creek below the bridge to get it back to its, uh, original, um, they're, they're gonna work on it to try to get it back to its original form. Want to touch base on a few of the assessment news, a little bit of the assessment news. The county has worked out, John Weinstein from the county has worked out a deal where you can get 50% off your appraisals. And I have, uh, put that list over there for the, um... for the participating appraisers who are doing that. That's only for senior citizens who are on a fixed income that currently participate in the Act 77 discount. There's also forms over there for the Act 77 discount. But you need to already be a participant to get that 50% discount with the appraisers. The other thing is that the deadline did pass for filing a formal appeal, unless you can still file a formal appeal if you have an informal appeal that was filed, and you have 30 days after that informal appeal results... After you receive the results, to file a formal appeal. So if you haven't had your informal yet or if you just have it, you have 30 days after that after you receive the results to file.
Mayor, if I could clarify you there. When you've had the informal appeal and it hasn't changed, the actual... Well, the informal appeal has changed. It's actually a different form that you would file. It's a special appeal form. It's... So it will be a different form, but it's filed in the same place on the county website.
Thank you, Mr. Solicitor. And I did attend a county meeting for our area, and I brought the information from Rich Fitzgerald and Mike Finnerty, and I made some copies of it. So anybody who wants that information who was unable to attend the meeting, there's packets over there for you. I do want to give a special thank you to the paramedics and the EMTs for providing a career lunch at the Carnegie Elementary School for the sixth graders. They did a great job, and it was a nice event. They talked about the careers as a first responder, and they actually gave a tour of the EMT vehicles or EMS vehicles. One thing I do want to thank is I want to thank the chief and Meals on Wheels. We had a very nice time serving at Meals on Wheels, and they asked me to read this at the next meeting, so if you'll give me one second. Volunteers for Meals on Wheels are needed Monday through Friday from approximately 10:30 to 12:00 noon as a driver or delivery person, and from 8:00 to 11:00 as kitchen help. You can help weekly, monthly, or as a substitute. Please call today to learn more. To contact Meals on Wheels, it's 1-12-279-5670. They are always in need of help. I stopped down here today, though. It was pretty neat. There were three scouts down there helping out, and they said they were helping out because of the... That they saw in the paper. So they decided to come down and help out today. So they were off school, and they went down there and helped out. So it was great. And two more things, Mr. President. One is I want to congratulate and thank the ninth and 10th graders and the teachers of Carlington High School for a very successful volunteer day. They volunteered in all three communities on a single day. And in our community, they volunteered at the library. They volunteered at Meals on Wheels, the Historical Society, the Salvation Army. They cleaned the park and the Singleton's Food Bank. So they did a wonderful job. Everybody I talked to, including Mr. Hatcher, said that they did a fantastic job, and they really worked well with everyone. And lastly, Ms. Demko had asked me to talk about May 12th. Councilman Sarsco with the Shea Tree Commission was going to have a planting day on May 12th. And we were going to have a cleanup day in the same area, so we decided to combine the two for a beautification day. We're going to have a cleanup and a planting day, hopefully with some prizes and some entertainment or... And some food for anyone who would like to volunteer. So that'll be May 12th, starting approximately 9:00 a.m. There'll be more information in the newspaper, though. It's going to be a Carnegie Beautification Day. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. At this time, if anybody has any general comments on any topic you'd like, this is an opportunity for you to speak. Come up to the microphone, please. State your name and your address, and speak your mind.
Mr. Boyd. I usually get last. This time, I'll go first. Chief Trump on this twice tonight. The first one is President Alas. You forgot to mention April 28th is a big day in Carnegie. The chief's 5K round for the fire department happens on April 28th as well.
We're not done yet.
I... Public comments. Bad until now. But anyhow, that's going. It's a big day in Carnegie. The second reason the chief is on my list tonight is you participated in something that's probably unusual. And this gets better. I'm breaking into one of my neighbor's homes the other day. And I just wanted to tell you that if you ever need to break into my mom's house to see if she's okay, I'll pay for the damage, because I appreciate it. And I think you guys made the right decision in wanting to check on that fellow. And I just think that's fantastic. So thank you very much. Yeah. Please don't do a lot of damage. I'll take care of it. Free up Center Avenue. Thank you, guys, for making the emergency, whatever it is that you did. I just got one question about it, though. Was it advertised? Did you get good bids back on that? It was an emergency. There's no bids. We acted on it. It wasn't advertised, no.
No. Emergency.
No. Why?
The... When the engineer group called around, they were under the... They were... All three bids that he got were under the advertised bid requirement of $10,000. So it wouldn't have been necessary to bid at any cost.
Nice. Well, I appreciate it, Max.
Just for clarification, we're talking about a vacant house, which was vacant for quite a while, and the roof was coming to pieces and boiling into the neighbor's house. And so it wasn't as if we went to somebody's house and told them we were tearing their house down.
No. Wait, was fire... It's fire some years ago? No. What's the... It's just rotten. I first addressed council about this a few months after I retired, which will be... I retired five years ago in July. So five years later, it's coming down. I'm crossing my fingers.
It's coming down.
But seriously, thank you. I appreciate it. And the last item on the list tonight is... Did I hear you say something about steps?
About tomorrow, I would use steps. Would you like to take that, Mr. Hatcher?
Are those the steps that go from modern to tomorrow? Both sets?
Or maybe one, maybe two, or you could cost one.
Yeah.
One definitely.
Why don't you just get rid of... My stuff. It was on my list. Why don't you get rid of one of them and fix the other? They're...
Just keep one of them. We won't need both of them.
God bless America. I love them. Love this country. Thanks, guys.
Fantastic.
Fantastic.
Anyone else comment?
I agree with this council stuff, but, you know, when you said about the motion thing, I didn't know if I was going to say anything about Michael, about the trailer thing. I'm a little confused, okay? You know, you say from 7:00... From 9:00 p.m. to 7:00 a.m., you can't park your commercial vehicle. You can't park your van. You can't park your trailer. You can't park your house on the street. But the guys who work from, you know, midnight shift, come home, park their stuff in front of their house from 7:00 in the morning till 6:00 o'clock in the evening. That's the same as parking from 9:00 at night and 7:00 in the morning, okay? I don't get it. I'm working my tail off. I do 111 yards a week. I come home. Last thing I want to do is not hold a trailer from the truck. I'm working in the community, serving all the older people in the community. I mean, the poor souls, they can't do the stuff themselves, so I'm out there doing it for cheap prices to help them, and I'm getting tickets on the truck. I don't get it. I mean, you know, that's discriminating me because I'm working during the day, and the guy works at Craft Heating, and he's working the night shift. So his van's parked, you know, all day in front of his house on Washington Avenue. Mine's out working all day during the day. I come home at 9:00 at night. I get the ticket the next morning. That's not right.
Well, I mean, you're addressing...
You see what I'm saying?
Right. You're addressing me, but...
But I'm addressing everybody.
Right. As you saw, I voted present.
Right.
I felt that there was another way.
No. Chief Harman took the ticket. You know, I was upset. You know, I jumped all over him, and I shouldn't have. But I mean, I'm working my butt off. I'm working in the community. I'm a working man. And I'm getting slapped in the face. That's not fair to me. Just because one guy who calls the police because my seven-year-old is riding an escape road on the street. So now he's got to bend this, and he's been called to police about my trailer, which sits darn near three feet up in my yard so that a fire truck can't get past the two houses. You know? I mean, granted, I've been parking in my driveway for the last two weeks since I got the ticket from Chief Harman. He asked me to try and keep it off the street. I did exactly what he did. But that is a pain in the backside. I'm holding that thing. When I'm getting back up at 6:00 o'clock, I'm going back out to work at 6:00 a.m. I mean, that's not fair. And meanwhile, Craft Heating... I spoke with Terry, who works at Craft Heating. He said he bought a lot to the borough. The borough said... He said to the borough, he says, "I do this. This is my living. This is what I'm doing. I'm working for a living. I don't know where to put my bed." They said, "Continue what you're doing here, Frank." Now, how is that okay for him? That's not okay for me. It's like I got this target on my back. I should take my name off my shirt and put target here. You follow me?
I...
I mean, I do work for Pat's mom. She's a community person. I do work for his mom. I do work for... I don't know if I do work for any of your parents, but... I mean, I cut these people's grasses for like 15 bucks because they're elderly and they ain't got no money. So I'm out there working till 9:00 at night. I'm tired. So why should I have to unload my stuff when I'm going back? And on the weekends, Friday night, I'm done parking. My trailer parks off the side where it's always set, not in front of my house, only during the week. Now, I think, if I parked it there and left it there and just went off somewhere, that's wrong. That's like me storing my trailer in front of my house. Let's hope that my truck can get up the next morning.
I mean, one of my recommendations was that we create a registration for said vehicles. And we have a permit.
Right.
An annual permit. And then we would have contact information. And if we did need your trailer moved, we would call you. If you didn't get it moved, though, then you could lose your permit.
My neighbor has keys, access to my garage. If I ever had my trailer sitting out there, he could move it in like a split second, which he would do that, because he's already told me. We both park across from each other, okay? So, you know, we kind of work together. If I had a bigger driveway where I, you know, can back both... My truck stays out in the middle of the street. I have to park my other truck so that someone don't take off the front end of my truck because I'm back in the driveway. I mean, I drive a big Dodge Ram. I mean, I'm sorry I can't. Driveways aren't always so big. If you've got a 14-foot trailer attached to it, you got room. So I pull up in front of the house. I usually put the trailer half a bit up in the driveway so that people can get through. And I don't... And no one is ever... The garbage man always go right to the street.
Is your pickup truck at Dolewell?
No. No. And that's what I'm saying. My trailer's the same width as my truck. So if I take three feet of my trailer and my truck and I'm putting it into grass in front of my house, how wide is a vehicle? Six-foot wide? Three feet of my vehicle and trailer sitting on a street? Not even the width of a vehicle. So why... Why would... I mean, why is that bad for me?
I think the issue is that there are other people in town that do have commercial trailers and leave them parked out on the street.
Now, Biggs had got his trailer still sitting on that street. It's been there all winter.
Yeah.
I'm attached to any vehicle.
Yes.
So why is... But his big truck is parked in that lot. So why is that trailer sitting there?
It's sitting there because we just passed the ordinance.
I know, but it's been there all winter.
Yeah.
You know what I'm saying? But I mean, I'm not trying to pick on him. He's got business, too. What I'm saying is why... I mean, this is ridiculous. This is discriminating me because I work during the day, and these guys work at night. So they can park, but I can't. Do you see my point?
Right. I mean, I guess the unfortunate aspect is that you should have probably came to like last month's meeting, because tonight, the ordinance was passed.
I need to get the ticket till two weeks ago. You know what I'm saying? I just got a ticket. I mean, granted, Chief Harman was nice enough to get rid of it.
Right. The ordinance is actually just advertised tonight.
Right.
Right. So the ordinance actually isn't passed at this point.
So you're saying I can come home from work at night, park in front of my house?
Well, we would have to go back and look at the ordinance.
This is crazy. You had, what, three tickets given out? I mean, that's... This is a waste of the police's time, you know, going out and writing a ticket at night for a trailer. I mean, you're paying an officer almost an hour to go up and write a ticket for $15, you know? know? And my trailer don't weigh, like you guys have in your ordinance, 9,500 pounds. My trailer's 2,900 pounds. My truck and my trailer don't weigh 9,000 pounds. You know, four wheels. I have two of those. Yeah, I got six because it's attached to the truck. But I mean, this is, this is ridiculous. I'm working here. You want me to move? I'll move. I'll move out of front. I'll take my business and go to Scott or go to my levee. I can move. I can move on my own. I can move.
The impetus for this ordinance started months ago because of people parking U-Haul trucks, and...
I understand.
We have a guy who's got five vehicles, and he runs a business out of his house, and he's got five commercial vehicles, and he parks on the street.
Okay, but that, I understand. I understand.
And we're trying to craft, we're trying to craft an ordinance that would, that would not, you know, specifically target an individual like yourself. And it's not always easy to craft an ordinance that is not discriminatory, where we could say, okay, this guy over here, we're going to cite him, but we're not going to cite you.
Okay, so...
I mean, we're always looking for input on how to do this.
But that's where my complaint is, okay? The guy from Craft Heating was told you can do that, but I'm told a little pink slip on my windshield.
The guy from Craft Heating, that, I think he just has a van.
Yeah.
Right.
But it's a work vehicle.
No, but that's not, those aren't targeted. That was actually a misconception from the beginning. A single work vehicle that is within the...
But that's discriminating me, because my, my trailer is my work vehicle. I haul my equipment to work.
And I hear what you're saying. Let me ask you this question. I'm not even saying that you're wrong. I'm listening to what you're saying, and I think you bring up a good point, but how do we prevent the guy from parking his trailer on the street for weeks and months at a time? How do we prevent that?
If it's disconnected from his vehicle that he drives every day, that's storing it in front of his house. That's storing it. Like you're saying here in this ordinance, I can drop my trailer off in front of my house from, from 9:00 in the morning, or no, 7:00 in the morning, and I can leave it sit there until 9:00 and then put it in the driveway. That's, that's stupid. You follow me? That doesn't make no sense. That makes no sense. But if you have a guy who brings his quad trailer home and parks in front of his house, and he takes it out, goes quad ride on the weekends, that's, that's pushing the buttons to park. Me, I'm working. It's attached to my truck. I'm getting up at 6:00. I'm going out to work. That's not storing my trailer. That's parking it to go to work the next morning. And when I'm not working, and you all know this, because you all live in this town, it sets off the street in that little lot. It's not sitting out in the old street. It's not blocking nobody. You know what I'm saying? It's not like I'm doing this to irritate ends or to irritate the police or, you know, the community. I'm coming home from work. And the last thing I want to do is drop my trailer at 9:00 at night, try and back in my driveway in the dark in a narrow street. It's ridiculous. And to say that Craft Heating guys and Comcast guys can do it, and I can't, that's not, no, that's wrong, because I'm a working man just like they are.
They are true. Is that what the issue is, the trailer?
No, it's commercial vehicle. My trailer is my commercial vehicle. It's my business.
Trailer's not a vehicle, it's his trailer.
When it's attached, when it's attached to the truck, it's considered one vehicle. When it is attached to it in a vehicle, this is from Penda, it is considered one vehicle. It's attached. If it is disconnected, it is considered a trailer. It's considered whatever you want to call it, an ordinance or distraction or whatever you call it. But when it is attached to my truck, what then? You know, it's linked up to the vehicle, it's considered one unit. And that's the way the state looks at it, it's one unit. Same with a semi. You've got a tractor-trailer truck, and you have, that's one big truck. When he disconnects it, he has a semi. He has a trailer. You follow what I'm saying? I'm not trying to be a jerk here. It's all a work vehicle. And you're being mean to me. You know, I'm not being mean to me. You're giving me tickets when I shouldn't get a ticket. Work. You know what I'm saying?
I hear what you're saying. I think everybody's getting the message, and I'll declare here from you. I don't know if there's anything...
Let's examine the ordinance.
I mean, it's not been passed. The ordinance is not passed yet.
I'm not trying to tell you to make it pass something because it's just me. I mean, but it's, you know...
The intent is not to punish working people in Canada.
Well, in my eyes, when I woke up, there were bodies, I got my wife got, when she come in and brought me a ticket off the truck, I'm thinking, this, you know, this is wrong. You know, yeah, it was only 15 bucks. It ain't going to make or break me, but, you know, like I said, Chief Harman, I jumped all over his game for it, and I shouldn't have, I apologize for that, but he did the right, he did a nice gesture here.
All right. We'll take a look at the ordinance, see if we can address your concerns in the modification.
Next question.
All right.
Carnegie Business Tax. What is a pleasure tax? I mean, I'm getting a letter from you guys in the mail, and I have no idea what the heck it's about. For $200. A $200 business tax.
Business privilege tax. It's a business tax. All businesses in Carnegie have a business privilege tax. It is a, it is a fee that's assigned to every business in town.
What do I get for it? What do I get?
You get police service, you get fire service, you get ambulance service, you get public work service. You get art service.
Do I get the park in front of my house service?
Pretty much every municipality.
I mean, I don't mind paying it, as long as I know what it's for. I mean, I get a letter to know, and I have no idea what the heck's even about. I pay my taxes, I pay a lot of taxes, believe it or not, with my business.
That's probably the lowest business privilege tax in any community around here. It is. Some up and running to thousands.
The taxes for the privileged doing business in the borough of Carnegie, every municipality, including the city Pittsburgh around here, has one, and Carnegie is pretty much the lowest. So because businesses head toward it in Carnegie, there's a business privilege tax associated with it. That's what it's for.
So now, all of a sudden, a check for the business tax. I just didn't know what it was about, and I was trying to figure out, you know, I'm getting tickets on my truck, and I'm going to pay a business tax. I'm like, you know, I'm not going to do that on my move. You know, and that's what I'm going to, if I can't park in front of my house, I'll move out.
That was my concern.
I've been here 22 years, and, you know, I moved from Baton to Carnegie, and I established a nice business, and, you know, if this is going to be like this, I'm...
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Al.
Nothing, will you?
If there's no other comments, we'll go to Councilman Welfair. Councilman Sarsfield?
Thank you, Mr. President. Even though it's the day after Easter, I want to still wish everybody a happy Easter. And, you know, with the planting of fresh flowers and trees and the cleaning of the burrow, hopefully, we can continue to celebrate Easter all year long. A few of the things that you had mentioned, also the Third Street Project, another visible sign of the progress that we're making. Also, I want to mention, to assist the Boys and Girls Club and the Meals on Wheels program, the Carnegie Democratic Committee will be holding a pancake breakfast, and will assist some needy kids with memberships to the Boys and Girls Club, and also assist Meals on Wheels to some needy seniors to discount their Meals on Wheels. So them are two needy programs that we will help with. And I know it's spring, but now we've got snow. We didn't have snow in the winter, but now we have snow in the spring. Nevertheless, public works, Willville is always. But I just want to tell everybody to thank you, and God bless all of you. Have a good evening.
Councilman Tina?
I would like to thank, excuse me, Councilwoman Covey for another successful Easter egg hunt, even though she didn't think it was as successful.
Is that what you call that?
Still nice for the kids, and obviously, I'd like to thank the fire department, Todd, for volunteering at the fire department.
Thank you, Ben.
Makes the kids happy, so it's well worth it as far as I'm concerned. And belated Easter, and pass over greetings to everyone. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilman Demko?
Just, Carlington's play this year is the Drowsy Chaperone, and I think they always do a fabulous job, and it's the 19th, 20th, 21st, and 22nd.
Councilman Perez, anything?
Yeah, I have three different things here, very quickly. I got mail to me this week, here, let me see, from First Energy, the rate that they're charging per kilowatt hour, I don't know if any of you guys got this in the mail, but they're showing a 27% savings, and their new rate is 6.85 per kilowatt hour, and that is compared to $9, 9.32 for Duquesne Light. So that's a pretty big savings. I signed up for it myself, but, you know, I don't know if everybody got it or not, so I just wanted to bring it up this evening. In Monday's, today's paper, there was a article here on page 44, "Consumers Dump Cable and Satellite for Free TV Invention With No Monthly Bills." If you read the article, it sounds pretty good, and it's only for certain areas, but you have to sign up within a 48-hour period of time, which I don't understand that. But if you decide that you want to do it, I think there's some positives to it, but I would call Comcast or Verizon first before you did it. The third thing was in, let me see, Sunday's paper, "For Long-Term Care and Assisted Living, The Premiums Are Skyrocketing For Seniors." And if you read the article, it's showing an increase of up to 90% over what you were paying before. There were probably about, according to the article, 200 insurance companies offering that type of insurance before, and now that's down to 24. And again, you have to decide, you know, what you want to do there, because I took my policy out when I was 50 years old, so I have a pretty reasonable rate. And mine hasn't gone up that much over the years, maybe about 12%. But according to the article, they're going to start climbing very quickly, and that can hamper a lot of people from doing this. So those are the three things I wanted to bring up tonight.
Thank you, Councilman. Welcome back to Councilwoman Covey.
Thank you.
She was not well for a while, and she looks much better.
Thank you. I have a couple of quick little things. First of all, I did want to say to everyone that sent me a card, an email, a text, and the people that said they were praying for me. I'm a big believer in the power of prayer. It brought me through since New Year's. I've had like four surgeries, and I am coming along, doing much better. I have an outpatient procedure this Wednesday, and hopefully, I'll be home Wednesday, I'll be outpatient, and I'll be done, and I'm feeling better. I also want to thank, speaking of the Easter egg hunt, the fire department for all their help as usual with the big mess we make. And besides the fire department, going back to being ill, I do want to thank our EMTs and paramedics. When my temperature goes to 103.6, and I don't know my phone number or my social security number, they just go like this, "Get an ambulance, Carol, we're taking you." So once again, they gave me a ride to the hospital, and real quickly, I called the chief. I thought someone came to my door one day, and I don't know if it's because I'm a senior citizen and in a scooter, but two young women went to come in and look at my bills, because they could save me money. And I thought, and why would I give you my bills? Thank God I have a mean dog, because I just closed the door in their face with a dog barking, and called the chief immediately, and he said, "Oh, we've heard this from other people. So people will come to your door, be careful, and say, 'We can save you money if you show us your bills.'" Hello? That's not going to happen. Two things. If you've never had a chief of police serve you a cup of coffee, you want to go to Bob's Diner on Saturday, the 21st, where the chief will be a guest waiter, and all the tips will go to the fire department. So I'm trying to school them into not spilling things on people, so it's not going well, but... And then the next Saturday, of course, will be the annual race. Please come out. It is very, I say this every year, family friendly. If I have a good time, we all have a good time, and it is a race and a walk. People come and bring their dogs. We have treats and water bowls for the dogs.